Good evening, everyone. And welcome to the regular meeting of the Mayor and Council of Englewood Cliffs. Today is May 8, 2019. It is 8:33 PM. We're starting a little late. We had the upper school students here earlier, assuming our roles as mayor and council. They did a great job. They answered a lot of questions. They took a few votes. I think overall it was a great success. Their teachers were here as well, so the teachers are very proud of the students, as were we. So can I have the roll call, please?
Mayor Kranjak.
Here.
Councilperson Woo.
Here.
Song.
Here.
Savari.
Here.
Park.
Here.
Alversa.
Here.
Here, Borough Attorney.
Here.
Municipal Clerk. Everyone's pregnant, Mayor.
Thank you. Borough Council President, would you please lead us through the flag salute? Can everybody remain standing after?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, just as for all.
We'll take a moment of silence in honor of E. Carter Carston, who's a former councilman who passed away on May 5. Madam Kirk, would you please read into the record the Open Public Meetings Act statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting was given to the press and posted as required. Date and time of this meeting was legally given as required by the Open Public Meetings Act. This notice is on file with the municipal clerk and posted on the bulletin board. Minutes of this meeting will be made available to the public upon the completion of typing and proofreading by the municipal clerk.
Okay, thank you. At every regular meeting, we continue to select non-perishable food items out in the lobby for the Office of Concern food pantry at St. Cecilio's Church in Englewood. So I thank everyone here who's contributed today and in the past. And if you want to contribute and didn't bring it tonight, you want to do it tomorrow morning, the basket will be there until about noon. So thank you again. And the Office of Concern thanks you as well. Can I have Department head reports? I see Mark Neville from our DPW is here. So would you like to give us a report? Just thank you for being here.
I'm pleased to introduce the gas main update. The park's open, and I just want to mention next month, June 20th is the first of two straight.
Where is the gas main working done?
Right now, they're finishing filling in the clip, and they're working south of John. Scott and Rich are sure we're doing this.
Okay.
Mayor, I know there was issues last year with the bathroom facilities at the park not being open early in the morning. So I've coordinated between the police and the DPW that DPW will open it up early in the morning, I believe like 7:30? At 7:00, 7:30? And the police department will close the bathrooms at 8 o'clock. Correct? Eight or nine?
About that.
Sound down. And as far as weekends, the police will open them up at 7:00 AM and then close them at sound down. And that's also to assist residents that go to the park and work early, walk around early and have to use the stables.
Thank you. Mark, did you also paint the new handicap spot at Woodville?
Yes.
Thank you for doing it.
The crosswalks.
Yeah, the crosswalks needed it. Yeah.
We had a third handicap spot.
Out by the children's spot.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. So appreciate that. Thank you. Let's approve minutes that are listed here. I have one comment to make on the January 3 reorganization meeting. Missing from those minutes were two things. One, I exercised my power to hold over for 30 days the Borough Attorney, Emory Rizzuto. And two, I exercised my power to hold over the Borough Administrator, then Jamie Barbario, for 30 days. So that needs to be added to those minutes.
January?
No, the January 3, 2019 reorganization.
I suggest you just vote in the other minutes. If there are no other questions on those, we'll hold the January 3. You're telling me the reorg is the other reorg, right? Not the signed I?
I could add.
The reorg.
If we approve them, I'll add them in.
I can see them.
Yeah, I think so too.
Okay.
That's a good idea. Let's just table. Was that the reorg or the signed I?
Reorg.
Right?
Reorg.
So you can vote on the other five. Of course, you can't have Ms. Savari and Ms. Song vote on 2018 minutes.
Correct.
Or on the signed I.
Right. Exactly. So for the purposes of this, it's the five that are up are not including Ms. Savari and Ms. Song.
Okay.
Thank you. Can I have a motion?
Can I have a motion?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Can I have a roll call?
Councilperson Woo.
Yes.
Song.
Upstate.
Savari.
Upstate.
Park.
Yes.
Alversa.
Yes.
Oh, yes. Passes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Before we open to the public, I just wanted to, I guess there's no nicer way of saying this, to take the wind out of some people's sails out here. So I want to reflect on an issue that was recently somewhat invented in this very room by Borough Clerk, the person who is supposed to be neutral in running our elections. At several recent meetings, there has been an attempt by council members, Alversa and Savari, their puppeteer Karen Geiger, and Albert Wunsch, to create a false light around me and former Borough Council President McMorro, regarding the retention of John Lanza as special litigation attorney in the summer of 2016. Alversa and Savari even ordered an investigation against me and Borough Council President McMorro to further their political whims using Borough money, because I suppose they are too cheap to use their own money when they have your money available to help themselves and their friends. After all, they have already paid the Democratic Party operative Albert Wunsch well over $80,000 this year as their Borough Attorney at Attack Dog. At the time Mr. Lanza was hired, Moro Road residents continued to experience flooding created by a very faulty storm drain system, which was created by the Borough's former engineers, Boswell Engineering, 10 years earlier. The residents had been complaining about that system for most of those 10 years due to flooding and substantial property destruction. The former mayor and Borough councils ignored them. After all, Stephen Boswell was good friends with former Mayor Parisi. He was a founder of the former mayor's bank and is a director of that bank. Since 2012, Ed Alversa was on those councils and was part of the governing body, ignoring our residents. As I promised to the residents of Moro Road, the first meeting I attended when I became mayor in 2016 was with them to discuss their flooding problem and the clear fact that they had been ignored by Parisi and Alversa. Once our review was completed and when it became abundantly clear that Boswell Engineering was not going to fix the problem that Boswell created, I asked the council for permission to hire John Lanza, who had no prior connection with Englewood Cliffs, to litigate the matter on behalf of the Borough. Borough Council President McMorro and I met with Mr. Lanza to discuss only one matter: the Moro Road flooding, and nothing else. At that meeting, no other matter existed that Mr. Lanza would have been hired for, and no other matter was discussed. The resolution appointing Mr. Lanza permitted the Borough to retain him for other matters as they arose, which would require the assistance of special litigation counsel. Shortly after his appointment, our Borough Attorney, our then Borough Attorney, Dennis Murphy, and I became aware of two Englewood Cliffs Police Department internal affairs matters that could not be investigated within the Police Department, because they involved the very people who were involved in the two internal affairs. Dennis and I, and no one else, and especially not Carol McMorro, then retained Mr. Lanza to review the internal affairs and to provide us with a report and recommendation as to whether disciplinary charges should be filed against the two officers. Other than Dennis Murphy and me, no one else was involved from the governing body in any communications whatsoever. In early 2016, I received two reports from Mr. Lanza with the recommendations to not bring charges in either case. I instructed that the Lanza reports be circulated to the appropriate authority/governing body, Mayor and Council, but that the report not be provided to Ms. McMorro due to her conflict of interest. So Mr. Lanza was retained as special litigation counsel for three matters: one, Moro Road, Boswell Engineering; two, which will refer to IA number one and will not mention the officer's name; and three, IA Internal Affairs number two, who won't mention his name either. So Mr. Lanza would have two matters open for his billing purposes: Boswell litigation and personnel. Mr. Lanza's invoice for the personnel matters mistakenly entered time for the one meeting on Moro Road with Ms. McMorro and me. This time, then, they should have been on the Boswell Engineering matter. What happens next could only happen in Englewood Cliffs, where our administrator and clerk, Lizette Duffy, is really just a Democratic Party employee.
Mayor, I beg to remind you, I haven't been rice and do not speak about my performance.
That's fine. Ms. Duffy called the--
Watch it.
Ms. Duffy called the then-police chief, Choffee.
Of course. I haven't been rice, Mayor. Do not speak about my performance.
This is not about your performance. This is about facts that actually happened.
Sure. So you're feeling--
Ms. Duffy called the then-police chief, Choffee, to review the Lanza invoices. I remind you that he was conflicted, but she properly provided him with attorney-client privilege information regarding internal affairs. Duffy also tells him that she will have Alversa stop by her office to review the invoices. Now, some of you are probably thinking, how does the mayor know all this actually happens with certainty? It's easy. Chief Choffee recorded Duffy on tape 78 and all of the foregoing. But wait, there's more. With the erroneous time entry, Duffy along with her fellow political travelers conjured up a conspiracy with Alversa, Savari, Wunsch, Geiger, and the Geiger-Savari Democratic Newsletter Eye on the Cliffs to place me and former Borough Council President McMorro in a false light. They then used the litigation that Lieutenant Tracy has against the Borough to obtain testimony from Mr. Lanza in a court ordered deposition. So essentially, they use Borough resources and funds to pay lawyers to further the Democratic, the local Democratic Party's mission of corruption and hatred. I will comment on Lieutenant Tracy's motives for his litigation, why he permitted Alversa, Savari, Geiger, and Wunsch to hijack his litigation, but I will say that I expect our police officers to be--
You don't know what you're talking about.
--truthful, honorable, and professional, on and off duty. Stop interrupting. I am delighted to report--
I'm really--
No, no, listen, there's more to this. You should really hear this.
No, I really don't think you should--
I am delighted to report--
You're a political agenda.
I am delighted--
You are being ridiculous.
You started this last meeting, and I'm finishing it at this meeting.
You are accusing us of things. Really?
I am delighted, however, to report that Mr. Lanza--
Big deal.
--was deposed by Lieutenant Tracy's attorney yesterday, and that Mr. Lanza not only confirmed everything I just told you, but he also provided the court with his timesheet, clearly supporting the billing time entry--
Well, we don't have that information.
It gives me great pleasure to lead this Borough by always following the rule of law and to be able to fight off the lies and hatred smelt by Alversa, Savari, Geiger, and Eye on the Cliffs.
You're asking us something.
Perhaps someday, perhaps someday, Alversa, Savari, and their puppeteer-in-chief Geiger will work with me rather than against me for the benefit of the Borough.
Perhaps you'll grow up.
Now, highlighting the conflicts of interest and wanton ineptitude of these people is great satisfaction to me, more than any apology would ever bring. This year alone, I have highlighted Alversa, Savari's outright dismissal of grave disciplinary charges and resulting improper payments to retiring police chief Choffee.
That's true. You didn't try to handle--
Anybody that's been raised in the Democratic Party--
That never would have happened, right?
$700,000 worth to Choffee, $300,000 worth to Captain Regan.
Here goes the--
Now, there's more, though. There's really, this is the most important part.
They earned that money.
Alversa and Savari's failure to condemn racism, sexism, and sexual harassment, their failure to condemn the targeting of public officials by a police chief, their failure to condemn death threats against a public official made by a police chief, their failure to properly fight the affordable housing scheme, their failure to discipline our politically driven municipal clerk, and the failure of Savari to accuse herself from the affordable housing matter since she lives within the feet of the property.
Continue.
This folks is how--
That's okay.
Just a few pages added.
If she wants to speak about me, I'll interest her.
So just as I prevailed on, so just as I prevailed on that attack, right? I learned today that there was an attempt being made by Savari and Duffy and their attorney, Joe Marinello, to exclude me from participation in the chief appointment process.
That is not true.
Because of the applicant--
You are an outright liar. You should really step down as mayor, because you are a liar. You are a liar.
You're protesting way too much.
You're a liar.
You're protesting.
Right, and you're quite upset about this whole Lanza-Lanza--
You're protesting from the last meeting. Yes, because you're trying to impugn my--
No, all I did was ask why you were involved in IA investigations.
Now, you're doing it, honey.
Yes, I did. Listen to the tape, Mrs. McMorro.
All right. All right. Hold on.
I don't know what you are afraid of.
It is well settled. We're not in anything, and I want you to know that.
Obviously, you are. You are behaving--
It is well settled and custom and discounted. Just because someone sued you or was disciplined because they breached a rule, the official is not conflicted. I should be treated no differently.
I don't think you're conflicted.
Now, let's take a closer look at this issue of who has a conflict of interest when it comes to selecting a next police chief. The Englewood Cliffs Police Department, PBA, which includes all of our chief applicants, openly, aggressively, disrespectfully campaigned for Alversa, Savari, Song, Allen Park, and Oh in their council elections. This is the gang of five--
You can say this 100 times.
We are not conflicted. We may get it returned.
We are not conflicted. They've gotten nothing.
They got, well, look, there's more to this, right? Well, what do we know?
I'm sure.
What we know so far is this.
This fairy tale--
If the 28 charges were immediately dropped by the gang of five against PBA members who made racist and sexist remarks--
They weren't dropped. They were sent back to the IA, which is where they should have--
I have been estated for PBA contract negotiations, and I have been estated for interview process for the next police chief.
There's a community there, no different than when you--
This folks, you gotta stop.
No, I'm not.
This is how corrupt--
Who are not using the pocket the way a mayor is supposed to? You're supposed to conduct a meeting, not--
You can have your piece, but let me finish mine. You could have your piece, okay? Let me finish mine.
You're wasting our time.
This folks, this folks is how corruption works in this town in New Jersey.
No, you are corrupt.
What is the common denominator locally and statewide? The common denominator is corrupt Democrats taking over this town and saying that they cost our taxpayers. I intend to participate in all aspects of the chief appointment process, and I intend to challenge your exclusions from the chief appointment process. The only remaining question now that I have left is whether the Bergen Record will actually report what's taking place here, or if the Democratic Party influencers will again stop their presses. All right. Should we open to the public? Can I have a motion?
Of course we can.
Do I have a second? Go on, favor. All right. So if there's anyone from the public who wishes to be heard, just raise your hand. I'll recognize you. Come up to this microphone here. Yes, sir, I'll recognize you. And then just state your name and address.
One second, please.
Hi.
I'm Aaron Caffeyone. I'm actually recently the president of the Board of Health here.
Thank you for serving on that board, by the way. Appreciate that.
I actually just had a couple of questions pertaining to the housing project at 800 Sylvan. And really, just as a, you know, a citizen who lives here, I don't know a lot about it, and really, I just want to find out more about it. I'm wondering how many units, I'm wondering how many new families we're planning on having here. I'm wondering what the plan is for the school if we don't have the capacity to be able to handle all the TIDS, if there's, you know, a significant number of families. We have a relatively small school district. I'm wondering how it's going to affect our taxes, you know, if we have to build a new school, for instance, or if we have to just expand the school that we have. I know there was a suit, a lot of this information just picked up from news and chatting with other people. The suit that was going on, I wanted to know what the status, what that was. I think it was against the owner of 800 Sylvan by the planning board, and then--
The other way around.
I heard something about, something about property at Hudson Terrace that has also been planned, and I was wondering what we're planning on doing with that.
Okay, so there's a lot, there's a lot in there. Let me peel it back as much as I can. We're in mediation right now, so it's subject to confidentiality, and I can't get into any specifics. What I will say is that the Mount Laurel decisions came down in 1976 in the New Jersey Supreme Court, requiring in subsequent cases that all municipalities in New Jersey have a certain amount of affordable housing. We don't have any at the moment in Englewood Cliffs. Last year, my 2018 council and I created a housing plan to accommodate basically 77 units on Hudson Terrace, thinking that that would be enough to take care of the problem. It was a bipartisan plan, by the way. We all voted for it last year and the beginning of this year as well, and the negotiation kind of continues from there. My position is I don't want any residential housing on 800 Sylvan. I've been very vocal about that. I think that it's better to keep that as a commercial property where people go work, earn a living, and support the economy that way. There's really little more that I can say publicly about that. What we do intend to do in the next, I would say, next month is have a, we'll have a solution that I don't actually support, but that the council, I think, does, present it to the public, and then the public could actually comment on that proposal. And we welcome your comments then, because then you'll have all the questions that you asked answered in terms of what's being contemplated. So certainly, you'll have notice, and it's not going to be on a Friday night or anything. It's going to be on a--
You know, the concern isn't the affordable housing, it's the additional units, you know, and how much that, you know, this is a small town. What do we have, just over 5,000 residents? And, you know, if we're picking up, you can, 400 or 600 units, and it's going to increase our population by a third, and what's that going to do to the new school district? So, I mean, the question is, I'm asking them, I'm trying to gear them so that they wouldn't pretend to have a suit.
So those are very legitimate concerns, and I share them with you.
What do you know about the town hall, and how will it be there to go through parking together?
All right, Caffeyone, there's one thing to tell you, there will be no decision made by this council until it's presented to the public and here from everybody. Okay, great. Thank you, Jim.
Thank you. Anybody else have a public question to be heard?
Yes.
First, Mayor, could you tell us which case the Lanza deposition was taken in?
That was in the Lieutenant Tracy case, is what I refer to it as. I believe it's a two-part heading. I think it's Michael McMorro versus Tracy, Tracy versus Michael McMorro, of course, the mayor, and the Borough.
My second question is--
Name for the record and address.
Lauren Eastwood for Willard Rock. Second of all, I see in the agenda that you're appointing Carmine O'Lampy. Did he put RFQ in?
I don't know. Did he?
No, I don't think he put one in for a special litigation. We have conflicts throughout.
Does that require, though, to put a RFQ in? We always did.
Well, you, under normal circumstances, we don't have anyone under an RFQ that we can put in because everybody had a conflict, unfortunately.
But, no, that's not the question. If you get, put an RFQL--
No, we didn't have, we didn't put an RFQL.
Thank you.
There's no, by the way, there's no, Mr. O'Lampy has donated no money to any of the council people. There's no pay-to-play issue, and there's-- I have to go out to the R.
He has represented one of them. On April 25, 2015, I emailed a letter to the mayor and council. The last paragraph of that letter stated that I was requesting an internal affairs investigation into a false and defamatory statement made about me. I have not received a response to that letter. Typically, I receive a letter from the Internal Affairs Department advising me that they have received my complaint. Councilman Alversa, where's the police chair? Why haven't I been contacted by the Internal Affairs Department about my complaint?
You can finish. I don't want to take up your time. I'll answer when you're done.
Englewood Cliffs is at a crossroads. The council can appoint a chief of police who has treated the entire community, including Asian-Americans, women, and people with different political views, fairly, equally, and with respect. Or it can appoint a chief of police who has apparently treated someone differently based on his ethnicity, someone who mocked Asian-American council members because of their ethnicity, someone who tolerated sexist comments or emails, or someone who spread lies about someone whose political views differ from theirs, someone you would not promote in your own private business. The council can appoint a chief of police who follows and insists that his subordinates follow statutes and regulations. Or it can appoint a chief of police who will expose Englewood Cliffs taxpayers to unnecessary and completely avoidable liability by ignoring or covering up violations of statutes and regulations by police officers and political allies alike. The council can appoint a chief of police who recognizes that he is a manager who works for Englewood Cliffs taxpayers. Or this council can appoint a chief of police who puts the PBA ahead of Englewood Cliffs taxpayers. Most importantly, this council can appoint a chief of police who will restore public respect for the Englewood Cliffs Police Department. Or this council can appoint a chief of police whose politically motivated policing ensures that the Englewood Cliffs Police Department remains laughing stock throughout the state. Councilman Alversa, I'd like the answer to my question.
Soon as you're done.
I'm done.
So I can check with Lieutenant Hill, our ILC, and ask him what the process is to your request. Thank you.
ILC or IIC?
The IIC.
The IIC. Anybody else wishing to be heard? I'm going to ask the public, Mr. Moens, if you have comments or you need to talk, just go outside, talk, come back. While you're here, please be silent. Same for you, Mr. Nika.
Mary O'Shea, 12 Irving Avenue. Please take some notes regarding the questions that I'm asking, so that when I'm done, you will be able to answer them. I was not here for the council meeting on May 3, but I watched the video. I totally agree with the comment that Mayor Kranjak made, that personnel folders of all the applicants for promotion to the chief of police should be complete with all information covering their time as a police officer. Personnel files of police officers applying for promotion should include the good, the bad, and the ugly, letters of praise and letters of dissatisfaction. Have the members of the police committee viewed the personnel files as of today? Question number one. Did the files contain all information on the applicants? Question number two. Have the interviews been held for the applicants as of today? Question number three. When I was on the police committee, I viewed some of the applicant's files with the other committee members. There were only positive information in those files, nothing negative. In order to choose a good chief, the committee must know all the information about the applicant's service as a police officer in Englewood Cliffs. When the files were reviewed by the current police committee, did an officer stand outside the door to make sure you didn't make a copy of anything in the file? Question number four. Did the officer, if he was standing outside the door, did he collect your cell phones also to make sure you did not make a photo of any of the contents of the files? Question number five. If not, why was this done when the committee was Republican? The previous police committee consisted of Councilman Woo, Councilman Mark Park, and myself. Why did the PBA file a court order to stop the reviewing process? Question number six. Did Lieutenant Tracy have part of that? Question number seven. Was it in order that the new council majority would make the selection that would favor him? Question number eight. Previously, Lieutenant Tracy, with the PBA, worked with the Democrats. Tracy, with the PBA, worked with the Democrats. In my opinion, he is collecting on favors that he was shown, that he had shown to the Democratic candidates in previous elections. Again, another political appointment. The new police chief should be an individual of the highest character, integrity, one that has good judgment, an individual that can show leadership qualities, like I have said previously. The final selection should be without regard to race, black, white, Asian, Hispanic, Native American, without regard to whether the individual is a man or a woman, without regard to sexual orientation, heterosexual, homosexual, transgender, bi, or lesbian. The person should not be discriminated against or given favor because of those characteristics. So I'd like to have answers to my questions. I won't comment any further, but I'll wait here.
I'd like to sit down.
Oh, fine. I'd like to wait here.
I want to treat you equally as everyone else, Mayor.
I know, but I, but I, but I still haven't used my five minutes, so I can stay here.
You have to wait for a minute and twelve seconds until you five minutes.
Well, you can start to answer.
I have my list to answer.
Why don't you just go ahead and answer?
I mean, that's a little bit.
If you're done, you can sit down.
I know, but you could answer while I'm sitting here. You don't have to wait till I go down, if I still have five minutes left.
The resident has a good point. Why don't you just answer those questions?
So the answers are no, no, yes. We did not review the personnel files yet, and I don't know why the PBA does whatever they do. That's not my business. Don't give answers to your questions. Thank you.
But the interviews did take place, right?
Interviews did take place, but personnel
They had?
Personnel files were not reviewed. That was one of your questions.
Right. I asked about the files, and I asked if the interviews took place.
No, no, yes was to the interviews.
You want to put the no's with the questions?
I don't remember what question, but you sure were there. You can answer them again.
Do you want me to answer them again? You can give me the answer that goes with it.
Because you went one after.
Yeah, go ahead. Ask the question, and then I'll answer it.
All right. Have the police committee reviewed the personnel files as of today?
No.
Did the files contain information, all the information on the applicants? You don't know? Because you didn't look?
Not exactly.
You didn't look. I hope you're going to look. Have the interviews been held with the applicants as of today?
Yes.
They have. When, did anybody stand outside the door to guard you while you were doing the interviews?
Not that I would.
That's what she asked.
The other question was, was there a guard there at the time that they were reviewing the personnel files?
We haven't done that yet.
So, this is why you ask a question, we give you the answer, now you're answering the question.
No, no, well, I'm trying to, I don't have them numbered on my paper, so I only numbered them as I was going along.
That was set up and changed.
Is there anyone else in the public wishing to be heard?
There's an answer. Do you want me to make them up for you?
May I?
I'm not going to do that. May I give you the honest answer? That's it.
I'm actually, Mrs. O'Shea, can I respond to one of your questions?
Say hello.
May I respond to one of your questions?
Go ahead.
Thank you. I wasn't the borough administrator when you reviewed the files. It was James Barberio, and I believe he's the one that had it set up with Lieutenant Hill to stand outside and collect your cellphones. It was not the people sitting up on this day as that assigned that duty. That was done by James Barberio.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Is your hand up? Is your hand up?
No.
Okay, sorry, I thought you were going to call you. Yes.
Hi, Maria Velari, forty-five Jane Drive. I'm sorry I didn't make it to the last meeting. We've had so many special meetings. I'm not even sure how many we've had since January. But I wanted to refer back, Ms. Velari, I wanted to refer back to the April seventeenth meeting. You became quite enraged when I spoke about the tape recording where Ms. Duffy was heard colluding with Chief Chaffee, and she mentioned Gloria Owenetta Versa, and where they were going to be setting up Carol McMorro to be blindsided at the next meeting. I listened to that tape carefully. The people mentioned were up to no good, yet all you got out of it is that you should investigate Carol McMorro. You became so angry, and you said, "Do you want an investigation? Let's have an investigation." And you proceeded to say that the investigation should be against Carol McMorro and not the other players on that tape. And the videotape will speak loud and clear, Ms. Velari. So you can deny that? Yes, we should watch. Everyone should watch it. And everyone should listen to that tape. Everyone should listen to that tape.
They should.
Okay, so, just to me, look, guys, you know, we're Republicans, Democrats, we're all people in the end, and what I see is a lot of retribution and nastiness coming up from up there, worse than I ever saw, worse than I ever saw. I mean, the way you speak out against the mayor while he's making a statement, the way the people out there are speaking out and making innuendos and throwing out, talking to each other, I mean, if we want to talk about being nice to each other, you're sure on setting a good example.
You're going to have to be right.
I want to know, what's, what's, what's your people's agenda against McMorro? I really would like to know that, because it seems like you are dumping on the mayor and Carol every meeting. And the tapes were not made by them. The tapes were made by Chief Chaffee. And what's on there is, is fact. It isn't made up. Everything that you hear on there is fact. Okay, so, I see that on the agenda you're appointing a chief. And I'm wondering, what is the rush? What's the rush, guys? You have somebody acting as chief. Why not take?
You can't hire a chief.
No, you're talking about a chief. It says, "Police Chief Appointment." That's what I'm reading. Okay, so, what I, I'm sorry.
There's nothing on the agenda.
I think it's on, it's on your, um,
It's on closed session.
It doesn't matter. Well, you're talking about it, and you, and, and I heard Ms. McMorro last, last meeting, where she said, that somebody said to her that you've already made a decision. So all I want to say to that is, please let me finish. Okay. All I want to say is, don't rush. There's no rush to appoint anybody at this point. You have Lieutenant Hill, who appears to have been doing a good job. I don't hear any negative stuff about him. I don't hear any tapes about him. I don't hear anything that he's doing wrong. Why would you, why would you want to remove him? Is he being considered? Is he being considered?
That was a personnel question.
That's okay, okay.
Justice is needed.
Okay. I suggest that you choose a chief that is not involved in any litigation with the town. I don't think anybody in town wants to see people being appointed for political reasons only. We want, we want transparency. We want to see, I'm not judging anybody. I haven't been to any of these litigations. I am not involved in litigations, but there's been so much out there, and the rest of the town is aware of that. So please, when, when you are considering, please consider everything. There's a lot of good people. I'm sure they're all good people. But let's not choose people that are involved in lawsuits that are costing us taxpayers a lot of money. Okay, as far as the affordable housing is concerned, this is a really big issue for me, and it would be really nice if we could not have comments while we're speaking up here. This is a really big concern for me as far as taxes are concerned and values of our houses are concerned. I don't have any issue with affordable housing per se. I just feel that whatever this proposal that's going on, and I don't know whether it's two hundred, three hundred, four hundred, six hundred, I have no clue, because we're not being advised of anything. And I think the town should be advised of what is going on.
You will.
Okay. Debbie, I really think you're conflicted, and you shouldn't be voting. But that being said, I, you know,
The whole town would be conflicted.
Whatever, yeah. I mean, well, listen, you live two hundred feet away.
The whole town would be conflicted with this affordable housing.
I don't think that's a fair statement, Councilwoman.
That's my statement. Don't interrupt me.
The whole town?
No, don't interrupt me, okay? So all I want to say
That's your question. I'm answering it.
Am I over? Oh, okay. Well, I just, I just want to just say one little something, honestly, just nothing. All I want to say is that we're, we're a little bedroom community. We're a little bedroom community. The state should be made aware that they are affecting this town in such a detrimental way. We don't have a town. We don't have a movie theater. We have nothing in this town. And to enforce something like this is really a bad decision for our town, and you need to fight. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public wishing to be heard? Yes.
Russell Perrino, two-two-zero Fairview Avenue. Good evening, Mayor, Council. A couple quick things. Northern Valley Greenway, thank you for picking up that ball and carrying, carrying it through. I'll be in touch with the gentleman that is sort of spearheading that, not bringing back any reports, say, that I hear about things that happen in the future. Right now, the DOT is doing, doing a report evaluating which of the three alternative means of recreational use that pathway should utilize. So it's in the works. I'll try to report back as I hear any advancement on that to the council and to the public. But I thank you. I have an item for, sorry.
Is that envisioned as being a walking path, a riding path?
Right now, it's, it's three options that have been put forth. One is a biking path, just one path for biking and walking and running. The second option is two dedicated paths, one for biking, separated by several feet of grass, and then a separate one for walking. And then a third option is, is preserving the opportunity to have a light rail train go through with a path potentially alongside of it. So those are the three things that I'd be looking at now by the DOT. I think they're going to have the report done within a couple of weeks.
The Hudson Bergen Light Rail that doesn't go to Bergen right now?
Well, the expectations are probably going to end at Anglerwood. I'm not sure we'll ever live to see when it gets to Anglerwood. But the residents of Tannafly and the towns north are dead set against the rail line being extended past Anglerwood. So that's why there's this discussion now of at least utilizing it for passive recreation.
I rode that recently. It's actually a very nice mode of transportation.
Oh, the light rail? I thought you meant a bicycle on the railroad tracks.
That's true, that's true. But the light rail was just broken.
I've tried it too, actually, a couple of times. Second thing, and this is, Lizette, we talked about this, I guess it was last, year last. I've got an issue with the round-up being sprayed along Hudson Terrace twice a year to kill the weeds. They've killed everything, you know, from the Palisades Parkway to the right way, to the Ashfall, basically. My office had a conversation with the gentleman, the DPW of Burton County, and he said, "We're spraying it twice a year." He needs to hear back from the borough of Angler Cliffs if you want that to stop. That's the list I heard, Lizette. I don't know if you've heard anything else since then.
No, I haven't.
Thank you for pointing that out.
No, I haven't. But I thought they cut down, like, Mark, have they not cut?
Well, there's been a recent case where it was linked to cancer.
Yeah. Yeah, they haven't, they haven't told us they're doing any for this year.
I'd rather see green weeds than just scorched earth.
I would ask that if Lizette would look into it once more and see if they need a resolution from his governing body requesting them to stop the round-up, that might be what they're looking for. That's the gist of what I got via my assistant.
Can we actually maybe have a motion after to?
I could send a letter saying.
Yeah, but I'd want the council to make a motion if you all agree to do that.
To do what?
To petition the county DPW to end their round-up spraying in Angler Cliffs.
It's also affecting the view shed, where now you can see, if you come up Bayview Avenue heading towards the Hudson River, now you can see that, you know, cars filling up with gas, you know, because it's a clear view shed now through the fence, where there was vines and such that were growing that would sort of protect the view shed. Now it's wide open. Anybody that drives through there, you'll see it. It's vastly different.
Besides the toxins out of being
Exactly. Just it's a no-brainer.
I would agree.
Last item is, this is a planning board matter. We're in the process of conducting what's called a reexamination report to our master plan. Once every ten years, it states statute that we have to do that, okay? We cannot go ten years in a day, because technically it means our zoning could be, let's just say, be looked down upon. So we're in the process of conducting that report. The subcommittee, the master plan subcommittee's been working on it. I'll be briefing the planning board tomorrow night again, and we're planning on a special meeting for the twenty-second of this month for the public hearing. We'll have it hopefully up on the website, borough website, if not tomorrow, by Friday, this draft report, you know, for the public to view, including the council people, obviously. But it's something that has to be done. It's not something that was optional. We had to get it done before the ten-year period elapsed.
When does it lapse?
June, around June eleventh, June twelfth, something like that. So we're planning getting it done before then.
Do we need to take any council action in that?
We, not to my, to my knowledge, no. I think it's something that we have to basically file, and then it's the, it's the, it's a document that the council can look at in the future, then potentially adopt some of the recommendations that we make in terms of, you know, potential zoning changes that you may wish to accomplish in the future. Obviously, the council doesn't have to. We're putting things out there based upon our experience over the past years, and the annual reports that we give to you each year, hey, these are the things that keep coming up over and over again. We're suggesting that maybe you look at that, at these specific items that'll be in this reexamination report. Okay, that's it for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the public who wishes to be heard? Yes.
Andrew Nika, fifty-four Elm Street. Tonight, I've heard from several people on one side of the room, basically trashing the reputation of some of our dedicated officers, among them, some of them who are in the contention for becoming chief of the department for Angler Cliffs Police Department. First of all, I think it's extremely unfair to the candidates to have their reputations trashed based on a one-sided view on things without having those people the ability to even respond to these allegations. And a lot of them are, most, all of them are just allegations. Nothing has been adjudicated. There have been no IAs, prosecutions, anything like that disciplinary action done because of that. These officers are innocent until proven guilty. That's the way this country works. And to have their reputations trashed intentionally and for political purposes, and let's not kid ourselves, it is for political purposes, because guess what? This side of the room over here, they have their own agenda with regards to things. And I think it's disgraceful that people who work in this town dedicate their lives and put their lives at risk for every single resident, regardless of race, sexual orientation, ethnicity, whatever, should be smeared like that. You know, I'm going to use Lieutenant Tracy. I know he's sitting behind me, so I'm not going to be intimidated by it. But he has done so much for this community, so much dedicated time, and to hear these baseless attacks against him is infuriating, because they're just baseless and politically motivated. And he cannot get up here and sit in this spot and defend himself, because he is not able to do that. And I think that that's disgraceful. And I would urge that this council, the police committee, when they're evaluating who they choose as the next police chief, to take all the facts, to hear from the candidate. You know, I'm sure every one of these candidates that's been tarred by the political people behind me has a valid and reasonable explanation that they can give for these accusations, and dispute them, and challenge them, and reject them. And I would urge not to let the mob that sits behind me dictate who this council will appoint as chief, and select the best person for the job, the person that cares most for this community, that will give the most time to this community, and get this police department back on track. You cannot, unlike the other speaker who said, "Well, just leave an interim OIC," you don't have a captain, you don't run a ship without a captain. You need a chief to run the department effectively. It can't be done in an interim basis, because it creates uncertainty. It can't be done in an interim basis, because it creates uncertainty, and that's not a good way to lead this department or to run any town department. Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Yes.
I wasn't gonna bring this up, but since Mr. Nikah felt he needed to bring politics into this, this was put out by Sabari and Song. It says, "The Bitter Truth," and it's a statement disparaging the former deputy chief who served for 42 years with an impeccable...
I have no idea what you're looking at.
You should know, Debbie, your name's on it, and they're not gonna waste my five minutes. But disparaging the deputy chief, but it seems to, there's a difference on how police officers are treated in this town. It depends on which police officer we're talking about, okay? So, if people wanna state facts as they know them, and I'm only going to state facts, I'm gonna state facts. And if it's about Lieutenant Tracy, I'm gonna state facts. If it's about Captain Murphy, I'm gonna state facts, because I saw the discovery in the Choffee litigation, and I have knowledge of other things, and Mr. Tracy knows that because his lawyer deposed me. And I hope each and every one of you read my deposition about my discussions with Lieutenant Tracy. And I'd be more than happy to have an open discussion with Lieutenant Tracy anytime he wants, okay, as Ms. Nikah just said. Now, getting on. Councilman Alversa, at the last council meeting, you were asked about the outcomes of the investigations. You promised an answer. Did you bring the answer?
Yes, I did.
Okay, you will give me the answer at the end of mine. Well, do we have answers to the investigations?
Let's skip the five minutes. You don't wanna lose your five minutes.
Well, you're ready to interrupt. Okay. There are several lawsuits coming and going with serious allegations. Have you looked into the allegations in these lawsuits? I've brought this up at three different meetings. You can write the questions down, and you can answer them at the end, like you did with Mrs. O'Shea. Have you looked into the allegations into these lawsuits before you would appoint a new chief of police? That's another question. Councilman Alversa, I brought to your attention that when you were the police commissioner in 2015, it's my understanding that then Sergeant Tracy jumped Sergeant Kottas to become lieutenant. At the same time, then Lieutenant Murphy jumped Lieutenant Mura to become the next captain. In turn, Mura sued, and the taxpayers paid for it. I brought to your attention that might have not been the correct promotional policy that you oversaw in 2015. Did you look into that? You said you would look into it and get back to me the public. That's just me, I owe the answer to the public. Says we got sued over that, and cost taxpayers money. Next, Ms. Sabari. At the last meeting, you made some inferences at the displeasure of the actions of an officer that you named that cursed on the tapes. And, I mean, I heard you say, it's on the audio, you referenced Lieutenant Hill. One of the, there are, there are other officers, several officers, that cursed on those tapes, and one of them was also Lieutenant Tracy. He cursed at me about an official action that he believed I took. And I wouldn't have brought this up if you didn't bring it up from the dais. He used the F-expletive word twice towards me. Do you think that that's okay and good judgment, Ms. Sabari, for Lieutenant Tracy to use the F-word towards a female elected official who was the council president at the time?
I don't know what context you're taking this out of.
The F-word. Do you think it's okay for a police officer to use the F-word towards an elected official? It's a yes or no question.
Well, I would have to listen to the tape and see what context it was in. Because everything seems to be taken out of context.
To curse an elected official?
When you give your analysis of what is on the tape.
You should have already written...
So I seriously suggest that everybody in the public listen to the tapes. I think everybody should develop their own opinions.
Miss, I've been saying that.
Because I think things have been taken out of context.
The F-word should not be used by any police officer to reference... I thought I heard you say something. To ref... Okay. To reference an elected official. Separately, there's also some troubling paper discovery produced in the Choffee litigation, and I've brought this up to all of you numerous times to go through the Choffee litigation, where there is documentary proof in the possession of the borough and its attorney that Lieutenant Tracy stated in regards to Lieutenant Scott Mura. He called him an S-blank expletive, and then Tracy stated, "I would like to slit his throat," quote and quote. I have brought this to your attentions, that you have a fiduciary responsibility to look at all the information about all the officers that you are considering to chief, for chief. I brought this up about Captain Murphy, I've brought it up about Captain Regan, I've brought it up about Lieutenant Henkelman. Last, I reminded you and brought to your attention at the last meeting...
Time's up.
Where you interrupted me before.
Please wrap it up.
We've timed it. Thank you.
She can finish.
I'm going to finish.
I didn't answer your question.
I'm gonna finish, I have only the four...
Mark, he's here.
Okay.
Here.
Okay.
Just a little, just a little.
Okay. I don't know who put in for the chief of police position, but I just wanted to give you a factual piece of information on how the roster works, and the lower the badge number, the higher the seniority. Captain Murphy, badge number 123. Officer in charge Hill, badge number 125. Lieutenant McDermott, badge number 126. Lieutenant Romano, badge number 127. Lieutenant Wicker, badge number 128. I don't know what you're afraid of, Ed. Lieutenant Henkelman, badge number 129. Sergeant Kottas...
Mr. Luciano, please don't yell out.
Sergeant Kottas, badge number 130, and Lieutenant Tracy is badge number 131. And you can see that Sergeant Kottas was jumped, given his badge number and present rank. And given the badge numbers, it shows Lieutenant Tracy is the most junior lieutenant. Separately, I'm bringing, I have an obligation. There are still outstanding tapes that have not been turned over. You need to be aware of that, and they have not been produced. And those tapes should be... And you're running for mayor, do you actually think this is okay for five minutes?
Would you change the way I act or behave?
What is the best way of somebody...
Carol?
No, but do you, do you think that if the visiting goes to six minutes, we're not gonna kill anybody? What does that have to do with something? That's just horrible.
All right, thank you.
You're a disgrace.
Okay. Thank you, okay. All right, let's, let's lower, let's lower the temperature. Mr. Councilman Alversa, I know, sleeping time has been a challenge, can you please answer her question?
Thank you.
But it's really your true calling, so I think you do a great job, I guess.
I am very glad, because I'm fair. It doesn't matter if we're running or not, Carol's a pro. I mean, that's the ridic, that's almost like somebody saying, "Oh, you don't make that kind of call at this point in the game." It's the same call, or it's the first thing or the last thing. It doesn't make a difference.
You're not fair, Ed.
No, I'm very fair. That's one thing I...
Okay, no, no yelling at the audience. No, no, no calling out.
I am very fair. I am fair about everything. So, the questions you asked were why people jumped, whatever that means. The process was followed back when those officers were promoted. They were, they took a written test, they did a, a chief of police interview with the, I think the state chief of police, to the county, I'm not positive. And then it was decided by the chief. So, that's the way it went. Whether you agree with it or not is not, not your purview or mine. But that's what happened. That's how the system went, that's how it worked.
They followed the proper policy.
That's all I can tell you. Thank you.
Well, we're gonna follow the proper policy.
We're gonna make sure, if that's what your question's getting at, for the chief, trust me, we're gonna do the best we can to follow and cross every T and dot every I. Everybody's gonna be allowed to see the personnel records that is on that committee, including the mayor, I'm for that, and we will make that decision, and we're in no rush. No matter what you heard from the lady in the bagel shop selling bagels alive, whoever, whoever you heard it from, don't listen to nonsense. We're gonna tell you when the time, when we are ready, when we are ready, we will present our recommendation to this mayor and council. And then the mayor and council in its entirety will make the decision on who the next chief of police will be. Not the person in the bagel store, not anybody else, just us. And we're all gonna have to live with that. So it's a big decision, we understand that. So thank you. Thank you very much for your concern, I appreciate it.
Your investigation, please, if you can do it. Do you have the results of your investigation? Do you promise to be answered?
Anybody else wishing to be heard?
Hey, are you ready to answer the question?
Go ahead, now, answer the question.
The question is what?
I don't answer questions.
I'm very fair. I just answered the question you asked. Oh, what was the first to? I gotta keep notes, so. It is, actually, you are.
Can you answer?
The results of the investigation from January 24. I mean, I've been waiting for five meetings.
I'll have to check with the chief, the license.
Five meetings.
You just said you asked January 24, man.
Okay, anybody else in the public wishing to be heard?
I'm gonna change the subject entirely. I wanna welcome Gloria back, and my question is really to, with you in mind. Sure. Last year, the mayor and council, several members of the council wanted to implement or designate this borough as a stigma-free zone. And somehow, instead of becoming a stigma-free zone, joining the rest of the communities in Bergen County in that laudable designation, the concept got perverted, and we became something else, unique and different. And I would ask that the mayor and council reconsider, and now that we have different people who will be voting, that you consider whether we in Anglerwood Cliffs want to be isolated, apart, unique, and known as the community that didn't really understand what stigma-free is all about.
Can you define stigma for me?
I am not answering your questions, Mr. Mayor. I am asking a question of the mayor and council right now.
Well, I'm asking back.
And I am not answering your questions.
So what stigma?
Mr. Mayor, I'm not answering your questions. I am not an elected official, and I don't have a question for you. My question is for this, oh, and I'd like to know, since you were a champion of a true stigma-free zone in our community, can we count on you to please bring back that concept and make us a kindred community to every other community in Bergen County? Thank you.
That's great. You know, I, I think in the last year, we've learned a lot about stigma. We've learned that it comes in all different shapes and forms, it comes in with conventional... And again, I, I support stigma-free zones entirely when it comes to people who need our help and assistance, and they should not be stigmatized. I don't support it when a police department is saying racist and sexist and targeting comments. That's also stigma, right? That's why I ask you, Ms. Geiger, and you can write about this in your next I on the Cliffs, or whatever you wanna call it in the next iteration, but what is stigma? What is it? Is it when somebody calls a hotline to a police department, they're stigmatized by the police department, and the next thing you know, they're getting harassed? Because that happens also. I read a lot about it. But I must say that the Bergen County stigma-free people have done a very good job in the last year. I've been monitoring them, I'm more comfortable with what they are doing, I think they are actually reaching out to people who need to be reached out to. That said, I still stand by the fact that stigma in itself is too broadly defined, and Gloria, I'm happy to work with you on doing whatever you wanna do here, if that's something you wanna take up, we'll do it together. And I will support it. Did you wanna add anything, Gloria?
Um, when we're all done, maybe...
That's fine, okay. That's fine, but I, I, yeah, that's fine. I, I do think that the Bergen County stigma-free people in the state of New Jersey have done a very good job in the last year, and I see they're very active. I get all their emails now, and, well, again, you are unable, Ms. Geiger, to define what stigma is, and, but we can't pick and choose here, right? Because if a police department is being racist, that's stigma, right? If, if somebody's making fun of an Asian-American councilman whose English is not as good as yours, Ms. Geiger, that's stigma. That's stigma, and you need to stand up for these people, not mock them, okay? So let's be straight here, we, we have to stop hate, we have to stop stigma, we have to do things that are right, okay? Not just what you wanna do. No, I'm not gonna resign, Mr. Luciano or Mr. Nikah, whoever said it, because quite frankly, I think I'm doing a very good job, because this town has never had as much transparency as they do right now. You guys know everything that's going on, that's why it's so easy to come here and hit me all the time. Okay, anybody else in the public? Lieutenant Tracy, did you wanna come up and speak? I'm inviting you. Well, I'm inviting you, if you wanna speak. I, I've heard you say so much down there. Anybody else?
So he thinks.
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Okay, Mr. Luciano, for the record, did not say anything out loud until just now when he yelled out.
Motion to close.
Okay, I see nobody else. Motion to close. Could I have a vote?
Aye.
Okay.
Please don't speak out.
Well, I, I see, I see all of, it's okay, it's okay. Listen, I, I see all of Lieutenant Tracy's hand gestures, it's fine, it doesn't bother me.
It doesn't bother me.
Okay. It doesn't bother me at all. So let's do payment of claims, folks. Resolution 19-116, April 18, 2019, to May 8, 2019, in the amount of $1,993,227.66.
Show move.
Got a second, please? I'm sorry, um, let's have a roll, Paul. Mr. Neville, you're free to leave, I apologize, you could've left earlier, but I know it's been a long day for you.
Who seconded?
Lizette, just get mine, please, it's fine.
We're good, because we're not gonna need... Who seconded? Ellen? Councilperson Woo?
Yes.
Sung?
Yes.
Sabari?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Alversa?
Yes.
Oh.
Yes.
Ordinance 2019, public hearing, 2019-07, in ordinance amending Chapter 17, Section 13, entitled Establishment of Restricted Parking Spaces for Handicap Persons of the Code of the Borough of Anglerwood Cliffs, Bergen County, New Jersey. Mayor, we need a motion to open.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone from the public wishing to speak? Motion to close?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I need a motion to adopt the ordinance.
For move? Second.
Councilperson Woo?
Yes.
Sung?
Yes.
Sabari?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Alversa?
Yes.
Oh.
Yes.
Mayor, would you like a consent agenda for all the resolutions, or is there one that you'd like to pull out?
No, let's go through each of them separately, because I think there's one in particular that's very important.
You wanna pull that one out, or hold all the other ones together?
No, let's just go through them all. 219-117, approved 38th Annual Move and Run through Anglerwood Cliffs, is that a motion?
For move? Second.
Have a roll, Paul.
Councilperson Woo?
Yes.
Sung?
Yes.
Sabari?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Alversa?
Yes.
Oh. 118, condemn antisemitism in Anglerwood Cliffs.
So, on this one, I, this is what I felt was most important, actually. I wanna actually read it, because most people, you know, we say here, "We don't read it, we just hear it." I don't think the title's completely clear, but it's condemning antisemitism everywhere, not just in Anglerwood Cliffs, that's the way it should be. But it says, "Whereas the mayor and council recognize that throughout the recorded history of civilization, among the most pernicious of hatreds and the recurring prejudice, is a recurring prejudice directed at the Jewish people known as antisemitism. Whereas it is recognized that even in these modern times, when we are complacent, that we have learned from history, and that its darkest chapters, including the Holocaust, will not be repeated. We see a resurgence in acts of hatred directed against Jews. Whereas the citizens of Englewood Cliffs believe it is important to speak out against antisemitism, so that those who spew hatred understand that we, as a borough, stand with our Jewish brothers and sisters, and against the many hatreds against our fellow human beings based upon their race, religion, nationality, or gender. Whereas the mayor and council believe that as a matter of our shared humanity and basic morality, antisemitism should, must be condemned. And whereas at the public meeting on March 13, 2019, this governing body was asked to consider a resolution condemning antisemitism, and, and whereas the mayor and council voted unanimously to adopt such a resolution, be it hereby resolved that the mayor and council condemn antisemitism in the strongest terms, and will to the fullest extent of the law not permit it in the borough of Englewood Cliffs. So, um, have a motion on it?
Move.
Second.
Councilperson Sabari?
Yes.
I'm sorry, excuse, um, uh, Woo?
Yes.
Sung?
Yes.
Sabari?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Alversa?
Yes.
Oh.
Yes.
119.
Support Greenway with Northern Valley.
Yes.
So move.
Alversa, Sabari?
Second.
Is that Woo?
Yeah.
Councilperson Woo?
Yes.
Sung?
Yes.
Sabari?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Alversa?
Yes.
Oh.
Yes.
120.
So on 120 and 121, I wanna formally recuse myself. I had represented, uh, a former owner of that property, not the current owner, in my capacity as an attorney.
I'll read it then.
You go ahead. Can we combine them?
Okay, so it's, uh, Resolutions 120 and 121, Resolution authorizing execute, execution of agreements for 29 Clifton Terrace, and indemnification and hold harmless agreement for 29 Clifton Terrace. I need a motion?
So move.
Second.
So 120 and 121.
Yes, uh, you moved it?
Yes.
Alversa and Park? Councilperson's, Alversa, I'm sorry, councilperson Woo?
Yes.
Sung?
Yes.
Sabari?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Alversa?
Yes.
Oh.
Yes.
Next one is?
I had a question on 122, um, why are we amending 19-01 with 19-122?
Mayor, I had, uh, a conversation with a clerk regarding that, and given the amount of legal fees, you had previously had on the resolution a monthly cap, which would require us each month to go back and re-open it for any time the cap was passed, and it seemed unnecessary. I based the number on the amount of legal fees that have been incurred over the last two months by my office, and I spoke with the auditor, who said this is a more acceptable route than any of that.
Okay, so that's probably a conversation you should have with the mayor as well, um, because I'm here at a meeting trying to find out what's going on. And I don't think it's the right way for the taxpayer to give you, give an open check like that.
It's not an open check. I can only go for the hours that I actually spend. If people stop suing the borough for needless things, I won't have to spend so much money.
Well, that, well, you, you knew that when you took the position, though.
That's right.
And so now you're changing the deal.
No, I'm not changing the deal at all.
You are changing the deal.
I'm not changing the deal.
Well, how are you not changing, why are we amending it, then, if you're not changing the deal?
Because the resolution has an improper amount. It won't work.
But it was proper when you signed it.
Well, listen, this council is predeterminating me at any point.
Well, you could also quit if you want.
I don't wanna quit. I enjoy this time. It's so much fun, so much more interesting.
Well, I'm just saying that you're.
It's so much more fun than my other kind of.
So the bottom line is you wanna get paid more.
I know, I wanna get paid for what I do.
Okay, well, you wanna get, you wanna get paid more. No, I, I honor my deals. When I, when I give somebody a feet coat. All right, listen. That was slick, okay. I, I oppose it, just for the record. Nothing personal, but I oppose it. Maybe I will.
Councilperson Woo?
Yes.
Does anybody have a conflict on this one?
Sabari? Park?
Yes.
Alversa?
Yes.
Oh.
Yes.
123?
Thank you.
Did Mr. Marinello ever represent you?
If I had a conflict with any member on this council, I wouldn't be able to sit here, so I obviously do not.
Well, I think you did represent him in the litigation. Okay. Different rules. Different rules, okay. Let's go. Yeah, so there's typos on 123. Thank you, Mary, Ms. O'Shea. Uh, this is Englewood Cliffs, Flat Edge Water.
All right, we'll take the vote, and I can fix it.
Well, I could see a fix before you vote.
It's unnecessary. You're the one who's been screaming about a conflict on that case. They could simply just fix it after the fact.
Well, now that we're paying you more, we shouldn't have these typos.
We're not paying you more.
Well, the next time you pay me, I'll pay, you can pay me for fixing this. Or you can just vote on it.
123, I need a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Councilperson Woo?
I think this one should've been RFQ'd, so I'm gonna vote no.
Yeah, I think we're breaking procedures here.
Sabari?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Alversa?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Okay, well, you, Mr. Marinello, will you indemnify us, because we didn't go out to RFQ on this, as a bow?
Mayor, the mayor.
Wanna stand behind your work? You told us that this is.
Actually, this is because you're suing us.
Okay. All right. Well, give me your emails, and I won't be doing it.
124, I need, uh, 124, and just so that everyone, uh, those that don't understand what this is, um, so last year, there was a company, the name is Atthee, and their solicitors, they had sued numerous municipalities because of their solicitor's permit ordinance. Uh, Wood Cliff Lake was one of them. And it's because they didn't agree with the time that the ordinance allows. So last year, we specifically allowed them to, um, go door-to-door for an extended time. We're doing it for them again this year, because we're trying to avoid a lawsuit. That doesn't mean we're doing it for everyone. It's gonna be as they come.
What are they soliciting us for?
Atthee is, um, uh, bug extermination. They go door-to-door.
So we're changing this to what time, to what time now? Nine a, nine, nine AM until 30 minutes after sunset?
Yes.
That's pretty.
Uh-huh?
That's pretty early.
Well, it is, and like I said, we're trying to avoid a lawsuit. Towns did get sued, and they lost.
Mr. Marinello, is this the timeframe that other towns are adopting, 9:00 AM to 30 minutes after sunset?
I was not asked to look into that.
Um, Mayor, just so you know, this resolution was written by Ann Marie Rizzuto last year. We adopted it.
Okay. Okay, well, I'm asking Mr. Marinello, if he looked at it, he said he didn't, so you guys are flying blind here.
He didn't ask me if I looked at it.
No.
He asked me if I looked into what other towns were doing.
I took Ann Marie Rizzuto.
I could do that, too, and I'd come under the bill.
And I changed the date, and I had it, uh, reviewed by Mr. Marinello, and he spoke with the, uh, one of the representatives from Atthee, their attorney, and they were amenable to it.
Well, right, but maybe in the last year, someone's appealed and prevailed, and, and we don't have to do this at all.
No, towns lost.
No, no, but maybe somebody appealed, and.
All right, well, again.
I'd like to have Mr. Marinello look at it, because I know Ann Marie looked at it last year, that things may have changed.
And we approved it under Ann Marie.
Right, but things may have changed in the last year.
Whatever you, whatever your pleasure is.
Quite frankly, I don't think our residents want people knocking on their doors at 9:00 AM. Or after dark, sure.
Whatever your pleasure is.
It's up to the council. It's up to the council.
I make, I make a motion to pass.
Yeah, I think.
It's the same.
In fact, let me just, let me just whisper.
Can we just vote?
They, they contacted Ann Marie, and Ann Marie forwarded the information to me, and said, you know, you're gonna have to do this again.
All right, there's a motion on the floor, then a second.
Councilperson Woo?
Yes.
Sung?
Yes.
Sabari?
Yes.
Park?
Yes.
Alversa?
Yes.
Oh.
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
Now, can we add that resolution regarding, uh, asking Bergen County to desist or cease the spraying of Roundup illegally?
Yeah, I'd like to do that.
Just not to waste another month on that.
Yeah, because they're gonna be spraying in the next month, probably. So, uh, is the council okay with?
They're saying spray it right soon.
I think you, yeah, you would've known if they did. Well, I don't know, um, look, it's Roundup that they're spraying, it's kinda scorchered. So, uh, I'm opposed to it. I don't know if we can get a consensus here, and oppose it together.
A lot of the issues came up, though, uh, with the, uh, last time, I'm trying to find, I think they, they have a little overflow, because a lot of the, um, cyclists complain that the overflow is coming up to that, that area where they.
They'll get over it.
But I'm just saying.
They'll get over it, it's okay. I actually rode through a plume of that stuff, a thorn, I was trying to get it back.
Do we need to add a resolution? Can we just?
I think we can do it as a motion now, and place it on a resolution at the next meeting.
Can we do a motion?
We're doing a motion now.
Are you gonna open to the public?
You don't, you don't need that.
Well, let's do a motion.
If they say you have to, I mean, you have to do it.
The mayor said at the last meeting, if we have a motion, we have to open it to the public.
That was a resolution.
No, it was a motion. It was a motion.
I'll open to the public, then. So I have no.
We don't have to do that.
You don't have to.
All right, I could also just write a letter. All right, I'd like to open to the public.
You gotta have, you already had a public portion of the meeting.
We just take a vote on the motion?
Like you said, Marson, it's kind of a, a, a.
Yeah, take a vote.
It's a great idea, I don't see a downside.
Is there anyone in the public that would oppose this? Just raise your hand. Oppose the spraying of Roundups.
Stop spraying.
Yeah.
I'm stopped.
Right, oppose stop spraying.
Yeah.
Would anybody?
More spraying.
Yeah, well, I mean, anybody on board with this?
Okay, we've now opened it to the public.
We were asking to cut it back.
Let me contact the county and see what they say.
All right, so here's what we're gonna do, um, our, our clerk is gonna contact the county, see what else they can do, but know that we're, the consensus up here right now is we oppose it, and then next meeting, we'll open to the public if they need something more than that, okay? All right, uh, let's do committee, uh, council member reports, and, um, I encourage everyone to give a report if possible. Councilman Woo?
Uh, nothing on beautification or anything.
Councilman Sung?
Mark spoke about DPW giving updates, so.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Okay, um, the draft was given by Steve Wilcox and Chris, a preliminary draft of a budget, um, to send out to the council, um, speaking with them in regards to a workshop, and what days they could accommodate, and, um, waiting to hear that, though. So there is a budget, and the council has it, and it's moved along.
Thank you for doing that. Yes, councilwoman Park?
Um, nothing to report with Board of Health. I was going to congratulate Dr. Capuano when he left, because he's our newly-elected, uh, president. Um, but as far as, we had our Little League ceremony this past weekend, and it was awesome. Um, it was a little wet in the beginning, but, um, everybody did a great job fixing the field, and we had Doc Gooden, um, it was so cool. Like, I, even I was a little bit sweating, and I, you know, we brought an old jersey, and I had him sign it, we're gonna frame it, the kids had a lot of fun, um, and so I wanted to thank, uh, mayor and council, um, for helping us fix the field, and also, um, thanks to the Little League, and Doc Gooden, and, um, I'm sorry, I'm so terrible, because there was another gentleman.
Donovan Mitchell.
Donovan Mitchell, that was also there, Coach, and, um, I want also to thank him, um, for attending our Little League, um, opening ceremony.
It was great, it was a wonderful event, yeah. Councilman Alversa?
I, I answered most of the questions about the police committee, but we are following the protocols.
Can, just for the public's benefit, can you say what, what the order of protocol is?
Uh, what we're following right now is we did the interview process with the candidates. We are going to review personnel files, and then we will discuss with the labor attorney, make sure we followed all the proper procedures and protocols, and then we will present it to the mayor and council for consideration.
Councilwoman now?
Um, I don't have any committee reports, but, um, I do, um, want to take this opportunity to revisit the, uh, the stigma-free, um.
Okay.
Resolution, um, thank you to Mrs. Geiger for bringing that up. Actually, that was one of my things, uh, that I wanted to do, but we had other priorities, um, since the, uh, the reorg, um, so, um, you know, I wanted to take this opportunity, because the mayor, uh, seems to be very amenable to joining the rest of the county, uh, after so many months of, uh, you know, uh, objecting and.
Well, we are stigma-free. I wanted to see how it went, and if it goes in the wrong direction, I'll be the first one to scream, so.
So I make a motion to adopt the, uh, the county resolution on, uh, stigma-free zone, and I need a second.
This is gonna have to follow up with a resolution at the next meeting.
All right, so, uh, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
What was it, stigma?
Stigma-free, Bergen County stigma-free zone, resolution.
The one they had, and I have a copy of that one, um, and that was councilwoman, uh, council president Owen, who seconded it?
I did.
And everyone's in favor?
Everyone's in favor, and I know everyone's gonna practice what they preach.
And, um, Mayor, the county sent over, uh, two huge billboards. When you leave this building, um, right outside the, um, the, the sliding doors, there's a, uh, three-piece cardboard sign. Please read it, it's very nice, and it's very enlightening. They gave me, I asked for two, um, I placed one here, and the other one is at Borough Hall. So I invite you all to take a moment and read it, and exercise it. Uh, and Mayor, we have our upcoming Memorial Day service, May 27.
May 27, 9:30? May 27th at 9:30 at the Firehouse. We honor our service members, and, uh, if you can, then attend, and, and bring children as well, it's good for them to get exposed to, uh, what we do, uh, in tribute.
Fourth graders, the fourth graders from upper school will be singing, and the fire department has graciously, once again, um, donated, uh, refreshments and pastries, donuts?